I'd like to call to order the regular board meeting in the Marshawn Community School District, Board of Education. This is the time and the place for the October 21st board meeting. Welcome to all of you who are with us, and welcome to those who will be viewing us on the late broadcast. Allow me to introduce the individuals at the table with me. From my right, we have Nico Aguirre, Janelle Carter, Mike Miller. From the left, we have Karina Hernandez and Sean Heidman. At the center table with me, to my right, is Paulette Nubel, the Board Secretary. To my left is Dr. Theron Schudi, the Superintendent of Schools, and I'm B. Niblock. We have a pink sheet on the speaker's table for you to sign if you would like to visit with the Board about any comments that you have that are not on the agenda. You will be given five minutes to speak according to board policy, and according to that same board policy, the Board will not be able to respond to your comments at this time, but we thank you for your comments. Please read with me the mission statement for the Marshawn Community School District. We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through positive learning experiences. And stand as you're able and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions to the agenda?
Yes, sir, it was an MOU or Wal for the purpose of applying for a local community grant.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second. Miller Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aguirre, would you?
You shut my mic off, it's not gonna be me.
Okay. Aguirre Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, say aye. Motion carries six zero. Considering that you and Mike have similar voices in the microphone, you're just gonna have to hit me up alongside the head here when you go and let me know. Oh, boy. I'd like to open the public hearing on the proposed issuance of approximately eight and a quarter million dollars for infrastructure refunding bonds. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to that issue? Any questions from the Board? I will close the public hearing on the proposed issuance of infrastructure refunding bonds. Mr. Potter, what are your additions?
Carrie's with us today as a representative of the Marshawn Youth Foundation, and we had our first District White Jeans Day, which is a big deal around here, on Friday, so I'm pleased to present you on behalf of all of our district employees, an approximate amount for which a check will come later, for sixteen hundred and nineteen dollars. So, thank you.
For those who don't know, the staff donated a minimum of five dollars to wear jeans last Friday, and that's where the donation came from across the whole district, so. And next, we have some video production students who helped out a local service agency in the CERC, Central Hour Residential Services, and they ended up getting an award, a technology award, due to a video that Marshawn High School students produced, so if you want to come here.
There's one more, turn it over.
We'll turn it over in a second. So, CERC contacted us, they actually contacted the staff, because they were applying for contests through Premier to do technology upgrades. So it was proposed that we would collaborate and do a video with CERC at CERC's location so that they could try and win this contest, and they won. And the kids did a phenomenal job, and so we do have the kids here so that they can talk about it, but we want to show you the video first and then we'll kind of turn it over to the kids. And the kids didn't know what that sound was, just. So this project was twofold with the kids. Some of them were working on the editing portions of it and the audio technologies with it, and some of them were working on the actual video.
My monitor's broke for the third time this week. Do we have any spare tape now?
Hey Lori, I've got this thirteen inch here, or I've got a seventeen inch. Which one do you think you'd like?
They need, they're both from the nineteen eighty.
Sorry, this is all outdated equipment. It's all we have. We don't have much money in the budget for anything else.
All right, I'll figure out which one I want.
I'll get in aside, everyone. CERC needs your votes to win this contest to replace this very outdated equipment.
Hi, I'm Kelly Smith, Program Services Director, and I'm here to tell you about CERC. We provide services to children and adults with developmental or mental health needs, helping families obtain independence in their community through living, learning, and doing. Our supported community living service teaches and assists persons in activities of daily lives, shopping, cooking, money management, all the things needed to get through a typical day. This can include hourly support as needed or twenty-four hour daily services. Our day programs are for adults who need support in developing or maintaining life skills, community integration, and opportunities for socialization. Respite services provide short-term relief in the absence of the individual's primary caregiver. Established in nineteen seventy-four, CERC has been in existence for forty-five years. We support over one hundred seventy-five persons throughout Marshall, Hardin, Tama, and Powashie counties. We employ one hundred sixty full and part-time staff. Thanks for watching and helping us to make our nonprofit run better.
I'm Linda Hindman, Office Administrator at CERC. We are always trying to keep up with advances in technology as we focus the majority of our resources on providing high-quality services to individuals with disabilities. Our agency is woefully in need of an office technology makeover. Winning this contest would help us replace some older, less efficient equipment and bring us some much-needed additional office equipment that is not in our budget.
Vote for CERC!
So I'm gonna turn it over to the kids, but just to let you guys know, they found out on a Friday evening that they were in the running for the finalists, and that we had to turn around and have this completely done by Tuesday?
Wednesday.
Or Wednesday.
Yeah, we needed it by Tuesday.
Yeah, we needed it, we needed it to be done by Tuesday so they could upload it on Wednesday. So that's how quick our turnaround had to be, so there was a lot of, not a long hours with some of these kiddos, but I'm gonna turn it over to the kids and I'm gonna let them talk.
I would like to mention too that there were several criteria that had to be met to win the contest, but the video intimidated us the most for three reasons. One, we didn't have any video equipment. Two, if we had some, we didn't know how to use it. And three, it had to be uploaded to YouTube, and all of us are old enough, we don't have a clue of how to upload anything to YouTube, so. We are very, very grateful to Jocelyn and the kids who get a super job, really enjoyed working with them. It was a great collaboration, so.
There was a lot of movement, but it was, it's the real-world stuff that the kids need to see. So I'm gonna get that to the kids and they can tell you what they did.
Do you'd like to introduce yourselves?
Hi, I'm Andrei C.
Hi, I'm Kristen Housher.
Microphone.
Hi, I'm Hannah Lopez.
Hi, I'm Tyler Hoskins.
So, that morning, the first hour, Kristen and I showed up, and we were told, oh, you're going, you're going somewhere to film, like knowing, no clue what we were doing.
And to be honest, naturally, me, as I'm tired, I said, no. She was like, you're doing it, and I was like, okay.
So, yeah.
When we got there, everybody was seven, and we walked in, they're like, oh, do you wanna come sit in here and just wait? We don't really know, you can do whatever you want, 'cause we don't really know what we want yet, but we know we have this set up, just see what you feel. And to be honest, I felt like I should've used a tripod, my hand was so shaky. But, yeah, it was, it was a blast just working there. And we, they were like, oh, we wanna use this, and then we wanna be able to point out the computers, and then I have this guy that I wanted to say, and I said, okay, well, why don't we have you walk down the hallway, I'll stand here, you walk in, I'll follow you in. And, yeah, the shots were just shot, 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 and they were, they were all shot just so really good. In my personal opinion, they also did really well telling, getting the point across to my ass, so.
And when they were finished filming that during seventh period for video production, me and, or Tyler and myself were told by Fro One to edit the video, so we did that.
In which they did excellently, man, they had, at one point, that noise in the beginning was really loud, Fro, do not the noises, they do very much, right? It, before like these guys stepped in, she was asking me, is this too loud, is this too quiet? And I was like, I don't know, ask her. And then she's like, I don't know, I can't, and she's like, you know what, I'm gonna ask these guys. And.
Yeah, 'cause in the class, currently, you're our only editor right now.
Yeah, and so the first person we thought of to help edit was him, and Jaime always said he wanted to learn how to edit, so we said, hey, we can help. And they just did an excellent job, and they did amazing.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you so much, and we're so proud of you all, so to speak.
We've got a certificate of appreciation, and we're really proud of the work that all of you did on this, it was very cool. I think I first saw it on social media when it popped up about the award, and it's gotta really feel good to do something of quality like that that goes back to the community, so congratulations.
Thank you.
According to Mrs. Wyatt, you can probably count this far as Bobcat Ready, I think, too.
CERC also has a presentation for the students as well, so.
We just want to thank you so much. Because of all your efforts, we were able to win this contest. Thank you, Tyler. Thank you, Kristen. Ellie?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks so much.
Thank you all for sharing.
So, as I shared in the notes and notes last week, Mrs. Wyatt and I had the opportunity along with Paulette to go to Schaumburg, Illinois for a few days to participate in the national conference for Forecast Five. We use Forecast Five analytics for both financial data, reporting, analysis, and presentation, as well as have partnered with them to use their Five Lab product for the Bobcat Ready initiative, so maybe we can go ahead and show the video of recognition we received on the national award.
Well, I'm with Rebecca Small, a Senior Five Lab Advisor at Forecast Five, and she's gonna tell us a little bit about our project. At the Marshawn Community School District in Iowa, a really interesting project where Dr. Theron Schudi has put together a certificate, a Bobcat Ready certificate, to be able to present students with their measurements around college and career readiness. Becky, can you tell us a little bit about the project?
Happy to, Mike. We were engaged by Dr. Schudi to use Five Lab to create this certificate. We worked with their ITS department, along with the high school principal and Dr. Schudi to load all the data that we needed into the system so that we could create individual indicators that aligned with each of the indicators in the Bobcat Ready. From there, we rolled those indicators up into pathways, and that was where we were able to determine college or career ready for each student. We built a data analysis board for the Bobcat Ready indicators that allowed the staff, both the principals as well as the administrators, to view the data on each student to determine whether a student was meeting each indicator. At that point in time, we also created the certificate that you mentioned, which Dr. Schudi asked for every indicator to be on that certificate with the results for each student, and we printed those, mass printed them to a zip file, and then presented that to the district. The district then printed those and delivered them to each student at their graduations ceremony.
And this process actually was picked up by the local media in a couple different channels.
Yes.
So I just want to say congratulations to the entire leadership team at Marshawn Community School District for their efforts in promoting college and career readiness through their Bobcat Ready certificate. Congratulations.
Jackie, you wanna come? So, I was really hoping David Stanfield would be here this evening, 'cause Jackie and I again had the opportunity, we have Schaumburg, to see this really neat little trophy, and we got a five hundred dollar check towards the high school for, to use towards the program. It was a little bit uncomfortable for me, 'cause as you've heard, my name was used a number of times, and although usually I throw out these crazy ideas, it's really Jackie and David that we wind up having to figure out and collaborate with Forecast Five on how to make those things happen, and it was kind of funny, 'cause when we got the recognition, I was like, everybody's doing college and career ready work, what makes this different? But what really made it different, I guess, is this report card, so to speak, that we were able to generate, and then they have teachers actually talk and work with kids on what they have met, what they're in progress on, and what they have yet to meet. And then Jackie's worked really hard to make sure that the kids that receive this recognition are duly recognized through their senior awards program, which certificates were awarded, there were a hundred and ten or so, a hundred and thirty that went through this first time when we piloted. And then we also recognized them with a symbol in the graduation program for having met this, and then, of course, we created a digital seal with Forecast Five that David worked on to make sure that their transcripts happened. So, again, I want to take the opportunity to commend where the work is really happening, which is at the high school, and especially with David Stanfield in terms of helping to make all of this work, and we're currently now trying to dovetail this with some high school readiness indicators for Miller Middle School, and we'll be going through some similar processes in terms of identifying the indicators, creating the data warehouse with Five Lab, and then generating reports on that as well.
You've already heard, to use my microphone.
Thank you very much. Before I start, I'd like to comment on Dr. Schudi saying isn't everybody doing college and career readiness. I spent, in addition to my time in the community college setting, I spent five years at ACT, and no, everybody's saying they're doing it. When I came here, I was impressed with how intentional it is, how real it is, and how rigorous it is, so there are very few people in the country doing that, so. Just want you to know that, because I was blown away, and I've been all over the country talking to people about that, so congratulations to all of you on that. And I promised only to take a few minutes, 'cause I've served on the school board before, and I know how long these nights are. I just wanted to start by saying thank you on behalf of Marshawn Community College in Iowa Valley for the longstanding partnership that we've had with Marshawn Community School Districts, and in particular, thank you, many of you around the room I've had the chance to meet already, and thank you for the personal welcome in terms of my joining the community in July. A pleasure to be here. So I want to share a few points of pride with you, and then just a little bit of information, kind of reminders about our bond issue that's coming up in November. And the points of pride are really related to our partnership. In particular, the great work we do with dual-enrolling students at Marshawn High School, and Marshawn Community College, and Marshawn Learning Academy. So we're really proud of that partnership, and just to share a few numbers, last year, we had four hundred and eighty-nine students at Marshawn High School, and an additional nine at Marshawn Learning Academy, who took college credit classes while they were attending your school. That's impressive. That only happens because of the hard work that you do in the high schools to connect students and get them ready. That combined for about eight hundred thousand dollars worth of tuition that students and families won't be paying later on. It saves time, it saves money. Mike, I believe you said you had a, when we met, you have a daughter who took advantage of that, and so approximately sixteen hundred dollars per student. And it's not just the cost savings, it's also the chance that it opens up doors for exploration and rigor, so. One of the things that also does for us, it gives us a chance to make connections with your students. We're really proud to say in the last, over the last three years, we've averaged about twenty-five percent of your graduating class coming to either MCC or Ellsworth Community College, and so both of those are part of the Iowa Valley Community College District, and we're really proud of that. But I can tell you, I met with Ally Osmondson last week, who wanted to come with me tonight, but she had things on the campus, and she said her goal is to grow that. She wants more students coming, and we can serve so many more students who maybe don't think they're on a path to college, if we can help make those connections. We're really proud of that number as well. And then in addition to that, great partners, you guys participate in College Application Day, that lasts the night, so students and their families get help with financial aid. You participate in the college fair, Iowa Valley Introduction to Healthcare, and Law Enforcement Academies, and you had students do job shadowing experience with our intermediary program. So we thank you for all those partnerships. And because of the good work you're doing, and the students that we have coming through that pipeline, we're able to have some points of pride at Iowa Valley because of the good students we're getting. We have the number one transfer rate of all fifteen community colleges in the state, and that's because we get top-quality kids who understand how to work and who care about being successful. We have the number two in the state Practical Nursing Program. Again, we get a lot of good students coming through Marshawn High School, so we really thank you for that. So those points of pride are just kind of a nice way to think about the foundation we're trying to build on, and part of what we need to build on that foundation is some additional facility needs. So on November fifth, in Iowa Valley language as well, you'll notice ballot language from us, asking voters to consider the thirty-two million dollar bond issue. It's the same issue that was on the ballot and narrowly defeated in April, and we really spent time, when I came on, understanding the facility study and the needs, and the reality is, the work that Dr. Dury did on the facility study was excellent, and the needs remain, so we've decided to put that back out and ask voters to consider our needs. So, thank you all very much for your partnership and for letting me come tonight, and for making me feel welcome in the community.
We also wanted to take time to recognize Mr. Potter, Mr. Andrew Potter, since this will be his last school board meeting. As a member of our administrative staff, as most know, Mr. Potter will be going over to the Marshawn Chamber of Commerce to become their Tourism Director, and so, Andrew, I think it goes without words to, again, there aren't words to describe the value that you brought to the district during their time as our Communications Director. I've had the pleasure to work with other communication directors in the past, and have never known one to build the trust as deeply as you have with our people. I think you do an unbelievable job covering out everything that could be covered, quite honestly, which I think is part of the challenge, obviously, with that position, the time commitment and such, and Andrew, as people will remember, was named Communications Director of the Year for the state of Iowa, I think, two years ago as well, so that was something, obviously, rightly deserved. So, on behalf of the board and administrative team, we wish you the best, and, you know, likely stay connected with you in multiple ways. As a resident of Marshawn, parent of Marshawn students, having a spouse that works for the Marshawn School, so, good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
There was a face cake.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Between being a reporter covering Marshawn School Board and being here, I think I've been to about nearly three hundred Marshawn School Board meetings. Most, I think I missed one because of my honeymoon, so I think I've been to nearly three hundred in a row, so.
We can make up for that.
Yeah. But never ever had my face on a cake, so I finally made it, I guess, so. Yes, there we go. Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the minutes of October seventh? Are there any items of note in personnel, Dr. Ryan?
No.
Looking at interagency agreements and contracts, we have a lot of them. We have a sales agreement for the purchase of band uniforms, we have a facility use agreement with Iowa Valley Community College. We have an agreement with Iowa Valley for clinical training, for nursing program clinical agreements. We have a data sharing agreement with Juvenile Court. We have an MOU with the Iowa Department of Education for responsibilities as dictated by the Workforce Innovation and Opportunities Act. We have a cooperative sponsorship with the high school, Iowa High School Athletic Association. We have a fundraiser agreement with Believe Productions for a fundraiser for the MHS Art Department, and the agreement with Walmart. We have one special of Level Three student tuition out contract. Any questions about those?
I will say that our attorney drafted a data sharing agreement, and I know that, I just had heard today that Juvenile Court was having county attorney review it on their end as well, so it may need to come back in the event that there's some desired changes.
We have two open enrollment requests, one for this year, one for next year. Any items of note in the bills? We have a donation from Locareta towards the negative hot lunch student council, Miller Any questions on the monthly financial report? We have. We have the list of members for the School Improvement Advisory Committee. And the board members will be on that until after the election and we set up new committees for the following, for the coming year. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm going to second.
Carter, Miller. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sustain. Motion carries six-zero. Is anybody on the sheet? Mrs. Williams, with you and your garage, come forward.
[inaudible]
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 Good evening. Oh, I was just thinking. Okay, very good. Good evening, thank you for having us. We'll start with some introductions so you all know who's at the table with me tonight. Amy Williams from Swat-Hogland.
I'm Heather Stanley, I'm an ELL teacher.
I'm Abby Hand, I teach third grade.
Megan Turbavel, I teach fourth.
Kami Udi, I teach Title I reading.
Sarah Nichols, I teach first grade.
And so our presentation tonight is really focused on the new literacy curriculum, CKLA. And so what we tried to do is connect it to the vision of the Marshalltown School District, which is, leads to preparing all learners through unparalleled culture of excellence. And so our presentation tonight was put together in hopes that you will see that connection that CKLA brings as well.
So in this slide, we include pictures of some of the components to the CKLA literacy program. Grades K through 2 have two different parts, skills and knowledge. And then grades 3 and 4 have an integrated literacy block. So in addition to students receiving Title I reading and reading special education services, they're supported by a really great reading phonics program. Students qualifying for ELL services are served through CKLA curriculum with programs called Language Studio. Explore Our World, a National Geographic supplemental program, was purchased to support Tier 2 ELL students.
So Iowa CKLA picked, last year, we put together, the district put together a literacy committee to pick a new literacy curriculum for this year. And we spent the first three months just reading updated literacy research about reading and writing, and so we would know what kind of curriculum we were looking for. And then we made a rubric to go with that. And so CKLA then met very high standards with reading research that was current and effective. And then it was also rated very high by Ed Reports. It's an independent curriculum review nonprofit, they review different curriculums and give different ratings, and CKLA was ranked very, very highly in that. So they got high reports from that. It met a lot of research-based. And then once we got to look at the actual materials, it contained a lot of PSYOP strategies naturally in it, which we know are very good for ELL learners. And it also had, it had strategic phonics, which was, through all the research that we did, we knew that we needed a curriculum that had specific systematic phonics in it. So we knew it had a lot of the components we were looking for. So we're just going to give you a little teaser about what some of our students are learning with CKLA. This is one of our first graders. That's a video, sorry.
We had them talking about the digestive system, that's one of the body systems we talked about. Pue is going to remind us how food goes through the digestive system.
It starts from now, it goes to the stomach, then it goes to small intestines. If it doesn't, it goes to the larger intestines.
And what happens in the small intestines, Pue, if they, if your body does want to use the nutrients?
It goes to your blood.
Very good. And then if it doesn't want to use the nutrients, then where does it go?
To the big, the larger intestines.
Very good. Thank you very much, Pue.
So that's just some of the academic language that our students are now learning and picking up through the knowledge strand. So we just wanted to also compare CLM, the literacy curriculum we were using, with CKLA now. With CLM, we had three different parts to our reading. We had a writer's workshop, a reader's workshop, and language study. Now with CKLA, there are two parts. There's a knowledge strand and a skills strand. With CLM, we had to supplement a separate phonics program with that, so the district chose really great reading. Now with CKLA, there is direct phonics instruction embedded within the program, so we didn't need an additional phonics separate with that. With CLM, the teachers in the district identified vocabulary strategies for ELLs. We kind of found our materials. There was no lesson guide. There was a lot of the work on the teachers. With CKLA, there was, it was a curriculum that we got to purchase, so there was teacher materials, student materials. They had strong intentional plan vocabulary. We were not, we are not curriculum writers, but we kind of had to be with CLM. With CKLA, actual curriculum writers picked up, these are the words your students should be focusing on, here are strategies that are good for them. So that's all embedded in the curriculum already. And then with CLM, the district did help us identify the standards, so literacy coaches worked very hard to align the standards of what we were teaching. But again, with CKLA, that was already done for us with the program. So we are for sure meeting the Common Core standards in this program. And then with CLM, there was a greater emphasis on the writing process. The students really went through planning, drafting, revising, editing. Right now with CKLA, writing instruction is often embedded in knowledge. We don't quite go through that whole process as much as we did with CLM. In CLM, there was also, children had a little bit more time in, they got to choose their texts a little bit more, and it was very much based on their level. With CKLA, the text is the same for all students. We do use some decodables with there. So each, all of the phonics skills that have been taught are in that phonics, are in that decoder. So kids are reading all skills that they have already been explicitly taught, but it is the same text for every student. With CLM, there was more student independent time, there was more center time, some read to self, writing, more writing time, more spelling for students to do at their seat by themselves. With CKLA, it's a lot more whole group. We stick together a lot more with that. With CLM, it was planned with teacher craft, with the focus, again, the teachers were writing the lesson and we got to put in a lot of craft as we were coming up with those lessons. We designed pretty much the whole lesson. Now, again, with CKLA, we have a lesson provided for us with the curriculum, but we still get to add our craft within that. But the actual lesson is written for us, so. Those are some of the differences between CLM, what we were using, and then what CKLA looks like now.
I did need to say that Mallory Kern, the Hogland Instruction Coach, is our guest tonight, and so she was a big part of putting this presentation together. So we're kind of giving her slides up among those of us who are here, and so she was a big part of putting this together, so I wanted to acknowledge her as well. As you've heard tonight, we have two strands. We have knowledge strand and skills strand in kindergarten through second grade. And so the knowledge strand really focuses on vocabulary development as well as comprehension, listening comprehension in addition to reading comprehension. So there's times that the teachers will read to the kids, and it's very different than just like a book read aloud, which was what we were very used to. They're actually reading out of a manual and they have big pictures on kind of a chart that they go through with the kids. The writing process is also a part of the knowledge strand. There's some intentional background knowledge being built and heavy emphasis on content and just science, social studies, and the arts. And you kind of saw a clip of that with Pue, our first grader, talking through a literacy lesson that was very much linked to science. Also, in the knowledge strand, we have oral language skills, where students are really focusing on speaking and listening, which ties nicely to the development that our ELLs need to learn.
Before we move on, one of the problems that we've always had from here on into years is our lowest scores of vocabulary in the state's esprits. It'll be interesting to see what intentional vocabulary instruction does to those scores.
It will be. And I will have to say, you know, as I, as we put this together, we are finally, it's been uncomfortable learning for our teachers and a really, really big shift on how we've ever taught reading. And it's, it's been nice to kind of see, like, we're getting some ah-hahs, we're seeing people making connections, we're seeing teachers figuring out, how do I insert my craft to something that is so structured? I don't like to use the word scripted, but it's very laid out for teachers, and so that's been a big adjustment for our teachers. And it's, and it's nice to see them, you know, really celebrating as kids are really able to use a lot deeper academic vocabulary than what we've seen in the past.
All right, well, on this slide, you will see, see teachers providing whole-group instruction. Teachers are modeling, their anchor charts being used to support student learning. Students have the opportunity for independent and their readers, which are on-level, or on-grade level text and small group. Their small group Tier One instruction with an ELL teacher using CKLA Language Studio.
So Amy and Abby kind of talked about the knowledge strand, so this is more of the skills strand. So during the skills part of the reading instruction is where you will see direct phonics being taught. You'll see phonemic awareness. We have grammar also during that time, and handwriting, and spelling. And then reading comprehension during this time. Knowledge is where they're going to hit the oral comprehension, so everything is read to the kids during the knowledge time. The kids don't actually do any reading themselves during that time. Skills time is when the kids are reading, because this is all at their level. And so they will, in K through 2, that's when they read the decodables, and then in 3, 4, they have readers during that time.
And, excuse me, the ELL component of this curriculum is called Language Studio, and that's a Tier One service that ELL students get. It's, it is the designated English language development companion for this curriculum. And the lessons, depending on the day, they might be used as a preview for what's going on in the classroom, or they might be used to reinforce the language and content that's been introduced in the classroom. And something with this program that we're doing, it's used for all ELLs regardless of their language proficiency. So in the past, we had pulled out into small groups just those students that were showing the lower levels of language proficiency, and this is used for all ELLs. So they all get those same services and have time with an ELL teacher. It allows them to access the grade-level content knowledge because they're, they're working exactly with what's going on in their classroom with us as they develop those academic English skills. And the lessons vary each day. We might focus on listening one day, reading the next, speaking the next, writing the next. It really depends. And they're, so they're really able to make connections between prior knowledge and take those to the classroom, or those new concepts, and reflect on their own ideas. And what's exciting, I had a second-grade teacher come to me the other day, and she said, "I don't know what you guys are doing for sure in Language Studio, but I've seen more engagement by our ELLs than ever before." Because we had pre-taught what they were going to have in the classroom, we went over vocabulary, went over content, and so she said, instead of them sitting there unsure of what to say, they were able, they kept raising their hands, and they were able to say, "I know this, and I know this, and I can share this." So they're seeing so much more engagement by our ELLs from the get-go with the lessons that they're doing. And they have, I mean, they're talking about Greek gods and goddesses right now. And so they, they're able to name all 12 Greeks and goddesses because we taught that to them with a song. So they're able to tell that this is what their power was. And so that was what a teacher shared with me, that she said, "We're really seeing that connection that the ELLs are able to use more of that, the language and that, the knowledge of the content when they're in the classroom." So that is one, one component of the CKLA that the ELLs get. I'm not going to sing. It's a fun song, though.
That's a little dance.
We did. We, our ELL team worked together, and one teacher brought a guitar, and we had all the ELLs together, and they all learned the song together, and they really loved it, so. And then, you know what's funny, though? My, my high school daughter had told me that they were talking about gods and goddesses, and so I was telling her this song, and she goes, "Maybe we need to learn that, because your second graders know more than we do." And I said, "I think you're right." And then another curriculum piece that we're using this year for our ELLs is called Explore Our World, and it's, we're using it for Tier 2, which means those students need a little extra support in English language acquisition and development. And how we're delivering that is when the ELL teachers aren't teaching Project Lead the Way every other day, then they work with the ELLs on Explore Our World. And it is, it's a neat curriculum. National Geographic published it. The district purchased it last year at the end of the year, and we had some training on it. And it really helps them utilize and learn real-world information. And it focuses again on their four domains, listening, reading, speaking, and writing, and it really is boosting vocabulary and grammar, because it's using everyday vocabulary, everyday grammar, but exposing them to, to the real world. So that's another piece that we're using for ELLs this year with literacy.
So when we were getting ready to make this presentation for you, we were trying to think of what kind of pictures we wanted to show you, and I said something that really spoke to me during our training this fall, was when our trainer showed a video of what the first, her first graders were talking and they were using. So we made a video for you of what our first graders are talking and some of the language they're using.
And we have learned five different body systems. Today, we are going to review some facts you have learned about each of those body systems. Sophia. Sophia, which body system is this?
Skeletal system.
The skeletal system. Please think in your head, what are some facts you remember about the skeletal system? Think in your head first. Please start talking in your groups, what were some facts you remember about the skeletal system?
[inaudible]
And voices off, just stand in your group and put voices off. Carolina, what is something you remember about the skeletal system?
My knees.
It helps us move our bodies.
My legs.
Fidell, what's something you remember about the skeletal system?
My brain.
It protects your brain. Ryan, what's something you remember about the skeletal system?
My rib cage.
The rib cage protects organs. Thank you. First graders, please put hands in your lap. Now, I should be up here. Allison, what system is this? Say it again. It helps you move, that's right. This is your muscular system. Good job, Allison. Think in your head, what you remember about the muscular system? You may start talking with your groups.
Answer your voices off, please, first graders. Ellie, what do you remember about the muscular system? I'm gonna give you time to think and I'm gonna call it again. Kimberly, what do you remember about the muscular system? It helps us kick a ball. Thank you. Jasmine, what do you remember about the muscular system? Ellie, what do you remember about the muscular system? It helps us grab things. Thank you. Aswaldo, what muscular system is this?
Digestive system.
Very good. Think in your head. What do you remember about the digestive system? All right, start talking in your groups, please. Allison, think in your head. All right, eyes up here. Zia, what do you remember about the digestive system? Can you wait one second, Zia? First graders, let's sit first, cause samples often be respectful to Zia. What do you remember about the digestive system? Do you remember one of the organs in your digestive system? Which one of the organs? Zia, right here, what's this organ? The stomach, who's having, is an organ in your digestive system? Rhett May, what's something else you remember about the digestive system? Eli, what do you remember about the digestive system? Can you say that a little bit louder, Eli? Casparo, what body system is? We're gonna stop her right there. But it is just kind of neat how even the IEP students, even the ELL students, like everyone is able to contribute something and they came away with some stuff.
And I will speak to that because title one, we usually do not serve, um, or push in, in the classroom during their knowledge part of the day, but I did, um, just for the part of, um, videoing that day. And despite all the background noise, that kind of stuff, it's very hard to pick up their conversations in small groups. There was a lot of great things being said if, if you could tune out the background noise. I mean, there really was. The next slide, uh, as Amy and Sarah already mentioned, this year, uh, between going from CLM and switching gears to CKLA, it was a huge learning curve, uh, for teachers as well as students, honestly. And so with anything new like that, um, you've got to learn to work through that sort of thing. The good news is we wanted to share with you some of the positives. Uh, now that we're a couple of months into school, we have, um, included a couple of teachers quotes from them and a fourth grade student. And actually before I turn you loose so you can read those, I also, um, not included on this slide, we just recently had parent teacher conferences. And there were things, um, that parents shared about their kids coming home, very excited about the topics, more the conferences that I sat in on. They're just, the kids can come home and, um, they're just, I think so different than what they're used to learning in the past. And they're grabbing onto that and holding it and going home and sharing it with their families, so.
And Megan, you can speak real quick on behalf of like our time, the homework piece, saying what you're finding out as a teacher.
Yeah, I was thinking when she was, um, Kim was talking, uh, we never stressed homework that much. Always thinking that parents weren't going to turn it in, they weren't going to make ball, interacting with students. And it has been unbelievable watching my kids. We're learning about the Middle Ages right now. They are thrilled to go home and give the optional homework piece a try. And, um, they just were like, my mom and dad loved hearing about this. I taught them this, that and the other. And, um, because the, the best thing is CKLA provides the homework pages and they actually include the readings as photocopies. So we have homework packets and so there's nothing that can get lost that I care about. So that works so well for, well, except for the whole packet. But, um, no, it's just incredible to see the parent-student relationship really growing. And that was something, um, at conferences, it was really, for the first time, uh, really nice to see that parent interaction.
So we'll give you a, thank you. As you looked at those quotes and, and heard our presentation tonight, we hope that you were able to see some of the connections that we made as we look at our vision of the Marshalltown School District. So at this time, we'll open it up for any questions or comments from the board.
I can just say from experience, my son goes to Hoblin. I have learned about, um, China so far this year. Trying to get what else he's come home and told me about. This is, this is what we're, nice. I mean, it's good to hear.
Ask him to sing you the song. Well, he probably wouldn't.
He would have gotten the songs.
But he probably knows about Greek gods and goddesses.
Ask him about the Greek gods and the Chinese movies.
He was excited about the Greek gods because he's been reading Percy Jackson for a while.
Yes, this class is learning about that.
Well, and that's, that's kind of the part two of why we chose CKLA because they really believe kids need to know this background knowledge so they can understand books like that. So we're providing the background experience for them to succeed in reading.
Has it been nice with the curriculum changes so that from your end and from the teacher's end that you don't have that as much work to do for cooperation? And have you found that to be a good thing or?
Yeah, I think there's positives and negatives to everything. But personally for me, I just like, I'd rather have more than not enough. So I started two years ago here, this is my third year at Marshalltown. And starting a couple of years ago, I came into being like, so what do we do? Like what is your curriculum? And there wasn't anything really. So, um, there was more creativity, I think, but as a teacher, I'd rather have more than less. And it's been an adjustment, but I, for the first time, am like really excited to, to teach literacy. So I thank you guys for, um, adapting to it because it's been awesome to see the kids so excited. I think that's the biggest thing.
That made me want to come back into the classroom and teach again. I was so excited for this curriculum, so.
And it'll get better and better and easier and easier. Teaching fourth grade, they missed out on a very large chunk. So for four years now, they have not had the access to the information that we need them to. But even that, I thought it was going to be so crazy, um, to catch up. And they have just soaked it in so much. It's just been really cool, so, yes.
Really nice to hear because that was really expensive last year with all this curriculum.
Well, you can tell as well, the kids holding the material. And for us, it's just, it's like you can tell that it is a special program and the kids feel pride in these readers and all of that kind of stuff and the information. And like I said, the homework page is having all the information already there. Everything's very organized and so you can tell that it's a very, you know, well thought out, nice program.
And I think we get to spend more time actually like adding those good strategies for it. Instead of having to completely write the whole lesson, that part is the least done for us. Now we just get to add, okay, like that strategy we used right there, that wasn't in the book, but I got to use my teacher crap to make sure my kids were talking. So I get to spend more time actually really focusing on the meat, I think, of the lesson instead of having to write all of it.
So board visit coming up to Hoblin, so this is some of the stuff that you'll get to see. So we invite you to, to come and, come and watch us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, evening. I'm Dee Bird, Curriculum Freshman at Bethel Peterson College in Virginia. I'm excited to bring to you tonight, um, the Met, uh, Marshalltown Community School District Registered Apprenticeship. And we are excited about this because as you know, with the Future AI Iowa, we've been talking about trying to prepare our workforce to have 70% of its workforce with education and training beyond high school by 2025. And we feel strongly that a registered apprenticeship program will help provide that training and skill sets, um, for our students. We also know that, um, it is difficult for businesses sometimes to get the skill training that they need. And this is a way that we can start providing, uh, training for our high school students, um, prior to graduation. We also know that the CNA, Certified Nursing Assistant, is a gateway to all medical professions. We've been visiting with, um, people from the veterans home, people from, you know, different medical professions. And they say that they encourage, um, students who want to go into any kind of field in medical to do the CNA to, uh, the beginning courses. As you look at the top 10 job postings statewide, registered nursing is number one in the regional registered nursing. And in Marshalltown area projections, it's also registered nursing in healthcare. So with that being said, we are, um, excited when Jim Whiteman came from the secretary, or came from the Department of Labor. And he visited with, um, Theron and I. And from there, we started, he started working on developing the standards. And we've met with representatives from the Veterans Home, Iowa Veterans Home. And they are interested in being in this partnership with us. Our responsibilities, so to ensure that there is, uh, participation from employers and there's an agreement plan that they would have to, um, be part of and sign. We want to make sure they ensure adequate and safe equipment for facilities, for training and supervision. And provide, um, on-the-job training and related instruction. They also, we want to make sure that our partners will, um, have qualified training personnel and adequate supervision on the job. The students are not just, you know, they don't just get a job. They actually have a mentor and they actually have people who work closely with them in evaluation process. And then also there'll be periodic evaluation, um, of the progress of the skills, the technical knowledge and maintain, um, progress records. And I know attached to my report, there was the actual standard, so you can look through that. The employers, so with the employers, um, they have to provide facilities to ensure effective training in all aspects of the occupation. They don't just concentrate on one area, they, um, concentrate on many areas. They have to have qualified personnel to provide supervision. They have to make sure that the health and safety standards, um, of the apprentice at the workplace are of high standards. They, we want them to provide a positive learning environment and encourage training at all levels. One of the things that we know is that, um, when a student has a mentor of some kind, through their training, that they will be more successful and also be able to look at different, um, career pathways that go beyond the CNA. And so that's one thing that an employer could provide. Uh, we also want to make sure they provide fair and equitable treatment of all apprentices and notify us if there's any changes. There'll be communication that goes, um, both ways between the, the school and the, um, and the employer. And then there's lots of documentation. If you saw in the apprenticeship standards, there's, um, rubrics for the supervisor to fill out of the students, um, that are involved in this. So how does a student become, um, part of the apprenticeship program? First of all, they have to be a minimum of age 16. So that would be entering in their junior year of high school. It is based on at least 2,000 hours. And if you read through the standards, it shows and breaks down how that works. If they are under age 18, um, they have to have parental consent. And they have to have successful completion of 75 hours of CNA training and the state certified testing. So we offered that course at the high school. And, um, the student, after they complete the course, can take the test. If you remember, I was here a few weeks ago and we talked about a, um, a grant that we received and the grant can help pay for some of that testing and some of the, um, needs that they have for employment because of having a registered apprenticeship.
Do you, 2,000, the student has to work for 2,000 hours?
To complete the apprenticeship. So it goes beyond high school.
Yeah, I mean, that's like 40 hours a week for a full year.
Well, if you look on the back of the apprenticeship thing, it, it can go through the summer too. Okay, so they can work the 40-hour week during the summer and get that. So it is, it is an extensive hours, but it, at the same time, there's different levels for them to go through in order to receive that.
Is it reasonable to assume that a high school kid will work 40 hours a week for a full year?
No, 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 no. They're not expecting them to work 40 hours during the school year.
So they can break it up.
Yes.
So if they break it up though, it's going to take years and years.
Well, they start when they're 16, so they have two years left of high school. So they've got a couple of summers to do.
Yeah.
Can you guys please use your microphones in the classroom?
So if they break it up, yeah. So if they break it up, we'll break out the summers. They get a good start on getting a CMA when they get out of high school.
Um, so the apprentice has to perform, you know, obviously, um, fulfill the work of the occupation. They have to respect the property and the sponsor and employer and abide to all the working rules and regulations. Um, have, um, satisfactory completion of the training instruction, maintain a record of work experience, training on the job, develop, um, safe working habits and assure personal safety and work for the employer to whom their apprentice is assigned. Here's a breakdown. So there's two, there's 200 hours for the first, um, level of providing general care. Then they go on to maintain a neat and comfortable environment for all patients. The largest area is the general care residence of patients. And underneath that, there are many competencies or that they have to, um, fulfill in order to meet that. So with the Future AI, with the big push is to earn while you learn. And that's what an apprenticeship does. And they can, um, help find maybe the right career pathway for themselves and have on-the-job training. And like I said earlier, uh, be assigned to a mentor. They can also, um, get additional training in a classroom setting to enhance their on-the-job training and get a certificate at the end. And this certificate is also recognized in other states besides Iowa. If, of course, we want them to stay with us, but if they were to ever move outside of the state, that certificate follows them. So with the last part is the benefits for the employers. It's, um, with registered apprenticeships growing, it's hopefully going to build their own future, um, workforce for the businesses. And apprenticeships, of course, can be in many areas besides just CNA. This is our first one, I believe, to ever do this. And so it's kind of a learning, a process for all of us as well as the employer. And so it's kind of a learning, a process for all of us as well as the employers. But with the help of the Department of Labor, you know, they help make it fairly smooth for us so that we can make sure that all bases are covered. And I think the biggest thing is that, you know, as we build our program, we're hoping that we produce quality workers for our community and for our healthcare system through this. And studies show that those who complete registered apprenticeships often stay at the workplace beyond the apprenticeship. And so the longevity is there for the employers because they're trained in their technical skills and they've also bought into the culture of the company that they're working for through the apprenticeship. As I looked at the mission statement that was up with Amy and the Hoblin, I mean, I believe that apprenticeship fits right into the mission statement. When we wanted to go, it was to acknowledge these skills. That's what they're going to learn in apprenticeships, very detailed. And hopefully help them successfully pursue a meaningful future and a career path. And it's a personalized learning experience because they are going to be on the job, learning while they are earning. And it's going to provide a personalized training system for them and having a mentor along with them. So with that, I hope that you will find approval for the apprenticeship program. And if you have additional questions that I cannot answer, I can try to get them and seek them out from Jim Whiteman, who has been helping us put this together. So are there any questions?
I think this sort of stuff is fantastic. Be willing for kids to get real-life work experiences, in this case, get paid to do it. So we ought to do that at as many different places as possible. The only thing that disrupts me is the amount of hour limit for this particular one is a lot. And so it's almost like, you know, if I chose to go this route and I decided I don't like it, you don't have any time to choose another route unless you quit and do something else. And so I question the number of hours it's required to get the certificate. But I love the, I love the direction that you're going. And I think that these sort of programs are what makes our school district distinctive versus others. And so we ought to keep it up. So that'd be my own comment about this one.
And Jack can maybe help with it. How many students do we have in the CNA program right now?
Oh, right now, we have thirty-some students in the program in two different classes. But we have sixty students in the building who have taken a class. We're not sure that they're all serving.
That could be eligible to do this because they took it last, this past summer, they took it last year.
How many students of the high school work outside of school? Because the point, I think that, for, you know, I know it's a lot of hours, but these kids are earning while they're learning. So they're going to be out working, most of them anyway. I'm assuming it's a high number.
Yeah.
So even if they decide to go redirect later, I mean, it's a positive.
Other questions? May I have a motion to approve the adoption of the Registered Certified Nurses' Age Apprenticeship Program as presented?
So moved. Second.
Miller Heitman, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Question carries six zero.
Thank you. Very nice.
PowerPoint background here is really awesome, guys.
First, we're going to talk about the upcoming sports events. So there's a football game on Friday at Fort Dodge. There's a volleyball tournament on October twenty-ninth at the high school. There's a Hall of Cross Country District Meet on Thursday. And there's a swimming and diving home meet on Tuesday and Thursday.
So the annual National Honor Society Blood Drive will be held October twenty-ninth. It's an all-day school event. It is primarily run by the NHS students but organized by Miss Edel. And just as one fact, blood is always in high demand with AV negative being the rarest type.
It's appropriate for the season of the year.
Some students at the high school will be participating in the poverty simulation. During the simulation, they role-play a month in poverty and experience low-income families' lives. The simulation promotes poverty awareness and hopefully inspires the students to help make a difference in the community.
Earlier this month, we had an author visit to high school. Antonio Rivera was the author of Interwoven. They met with students at LOL over lunch, which is basically a group of students who meet during lunch and speak about a book in the month, what they're reading. And they spoke to those students who attended about the books that they wrote. Trunk or Tree, we are also hosting Trunk or Tree at the MHS parking lot again for listening, you know. Over a thousand students attended last year, so we're also expecting a lot of other people to attend also with their kids. It is at five-thirty PM to seven. And multiple student organizations are also attending and participating such as DOG, Student Senate, Health Careers Club, et cetera. And Saturday Academy, we have several of these every year. It's for students to have help with their homework or classwork. And teachers come to that Saturday Academy and help those students with any trouble that they're having. There is also student volunteers, so students who volunteer to come to the school on that Saturday to help students with their homework and classwork and also to help them understand more the material so that they also can probably come out there and volunteer as well.
The school musical is coming up. It's in the high school auditorium. The dates have changed though. They're November second at seven and November third at two o'clock. They had to change because there may be a conflict with football playoffs. The tickets are five dollars, but the activity tickets are honored as general seating. And over eighty MHS students are in the production.
They had received, it's nineteenth division, that's wrong. One, two weeks ago at Fort Dodge, band extravaganza took place last Monday with a good turnout. And then seniors were recognized last Friday during halftime. Currently, there's cheer auditions to start off concert band. And lastly, all-state auditions are taking place this Saturday. So clubs are starting to fundraise as the weeks go by. Primarily, Botany Club has sold tickets during football games and after-school. And then Health Careers had a big sale last Friday. And any child will continue to prepare for their first fundraiser.
Questions for the ladies?
How well-attended are the Saturday academies with their homework case, do you know? You guys probably don't have to go and be in all those.
So I do know that some classmates of mine do go. And teachers also tell their students that there will be a time in that Saturday visit. That Saturday visit, that Saturday Academy. And I do know that also students who do go, they also find a lot of help. So the more they go, the more they'll learn out of the classroom. So I think that's also like a really good opportunity that even if you're not really that bad in like in the class, that's still a good place to go to see if you're doing well. Or if you want to volunteer, you can also help other students who are struggling.
One last thing, although the author visit was not my slight, her story really speaks a lot about the people in our community and even some people in high school who go through these difficulties.
Other questions? Each week you raise your own bar. That's pretty great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have any information that you would like to put out in this?
I would just say that we have some outstanding sales tax revenue bonds that are callable on January first of 2020. And due to the low interest rates, we have an opportunity to refinance those and realize a net savings of around $200,000. So that, that is what we are proposing.
Questions for Paula?
May I have a motion to support the proposed issuance of school infrastructure sales, service and use tax revenue repleting bonds as presented?
So moved. Second.
Carter Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Question carries six zero.
It's always fun to hear how much we're in.
Well, I'm glad I get to talk to you about it. So tonight, I want to talk about getting your approval to seek authority from the School Budget Review Committee to address our special education deficit. Now, I know many of you have heard this before, but I think it's good for the community to hear it as well. Certain educational programs like special education, there are funding mechanisms that made available so that we can recover a deficit like this or expenditures due to the lack of federal or state funding. And special education is commonly one of those. Because our district, like the vast majority across the state, run a deficit in special education every year. So if you don't remember or you're not aware, special education has a funding mechanism. And how it works in the state of Iowa is that every child eligible for special education-related services receives an individualized education program or called IEP. And that IEP outlines really the effects of their educational disability and how that service impacts their ability to be successful in our general education classrooms. Based on the services written into that document, the state has a rubric system they use between themselves and the area education agency to decide how much money per student we receive. Now, there's one special day every year that they base that number on. It's actually coming up this Friday, what we call Child Count Day. So based on the number of students we have enrolled in our district with IEPs and the application of that rubric, we'll have money determined then for a future year. But in general, the way the formula works is all kids with disabilities are general kids first. So we receive the 1.0 funding. And then based on the rubric, there's three different levels of service you can have applied to your IEP. And they're very fancy. We call them level one, level two, and level three. So essentially, if you get level one funding, there's a formula that takes the general funding you receive and provides a multiplier. So you can see how that works out across, you know, level one service, you get just over $11,000. Level two service, you get just over $15,000, and level three, you get just over $23,000. During the eighteen-nineteen school year, we served 661 children with disabilities between the ages of three and 21. Our percentage in the state or in districts is 11.56%. That's a little bit under the state and AEA average. So our services are right where the state would expect us to be, essentially. During this year, our district employed seventy certified special education teachers and funded ninety special education parent educators. So that weighted funds that we received through that formula covered seventy-three, or seventy-three percent of those dollars were used to support the salaries and benefits of those two employee groups. The additional 27% of the weighted funds were used for things like instructional materials that you've approved for our staff, specialized equipment, contracted service, like our therapeutic foreoaks program is an example of that, and other general program expenditures. Unfortunately, what the funds did not account for were things like tuition out students, which was a large portion of funds. Transportation costs, cost for professional development, and other specialized instructional materials and supplies some of our students need. So for those expenditures, they came up to roughly 2.3 million for that year. How we look compared to the state in these areas? In Marshalltown, $19,118 is the cost for special education students to serve during that period in time. And across the state, $18,946 was the average cost. So we were pretty comparable to the picture across the state. If you look at the revenue per student, $16,210 was Marshalltown's and $17,029 was the state. So again, we're fairly comparable to the picture across the state. If you want to look at our comparison to districts of similar size and makeup, we're about in the middle of the pack in both areas of expense per served and also expenditures as a percent of operating cost. So there are other students who pay, or other districts who pay more to serve students and there are some districts who pay a little bit less.
Map of the six hundreds. Using my normal. Of the 661 students that we have and on average, we're collecting 16,200. That would lead me to believe that most of the kids are level three kids. Is that?
The vast majority of our kids would actually show up in that level one, level two band. We have a smaller percentage in that level three.
And on average, we're getting $16,200 per kid?
Yes, when you look across all the different services.
Not sure how that map, does that math work?
There are some other things in the special ed finance formula that aren't actually financed-driven, like transportation costs. Transportation costs are all calculated based on special ed miles at a special rate. So it's not as simple as just dividing the total by the number of the kids.
And how do you classify a student as a one, two, or three?
That classification is given to us by the AEA and Department of Ed. So essentially, a team comes together and they talk about the effects of the disability on access to education. That document is then reviewed by an outside agency or a group, and then they just assign a weighting to it and tell us. So we find out later what the funding is based on how the IEP is written. Did that answer your question?
So we don't have any input on whether we don't say, that's a level one. Somebody else says that.
Somebody else says that.
Is that the way it works for all districts?
Yes.
So no district has any influence, say, oh, that's a level three, I'm going to give $18,600 for that person?
We do have conversations when we see a weighting come back that we think maybe is not correct. But essentially, we don't have the final say in what that weighting looks like.
Okay, okay. So the fact that we're getting $1,000 less per special education student than the average district is just luck in the draw?
So there's a...
Well, there's another piece that plays into that too, and that's the net Medicaid reimbursement. So we had a net Medicaid reimbursement of about 720, I think, for last year. And so that Medicaid reimbursement reduces the deficit dollar for dollar. So the more Medicaid we get, the less our deficit is and is going to offset some of that too.
So you're saying that comparing these numbers that he gave us isn't really...
There's many pieces that go into that special ed deficit. So yes, we don't, we haven't compared those individual pieces between districts.
So if you look at our special education deficit over time, in sixteen-seventeen, we were close to 2 million. In seventeen-eighteen, we had reduced down a little bit to a million nine. And for the eighteen-nineteen year, we're at a million seven. So we're continuing to move in a direction where we're making sure we're using our resources more efficiently and effectively and leveraging whatever we can to offset some of those costs. So I'm real excited to say that we've had a decrease of 176,000 between the last school year and current school year in this. In over two years, almost $200,000 for a decrease.
A lot introduced to that, so the service level's still high, so...
Yeah, there's a lot. We've put a lot of emphasis in first making sure that we are having the right people in the right positions. So make sure our staffing is accurate, and it's not overstaffed, it's not understaffed, but where our district needs. Working really hard with the transportation department to make sure that we're running efficient routes and making sure that we're using those resources well. We've done a lot of emphasis on our Medicaid, making sure that those kids who may be eligible, because we do have to get family permission for that. We were seeking to get those permissions and document that and try to maximize that reimbursement process.
For 1819, our number of certified teachers was down also, so that was a big area where we were down.
So along those lines, the things we're continuing to do to try to be really good stewards of our funds while making sure that we're serving our kids appropriately, we're always looking for ways to be more effective and more efficient. We're always looking to align our special education staff into our student needs. Sometimes that means changing people's positions, asking people to do different kinds of jobs than they've done before. That's an annual conversation based on really what the services are for the kids. Continuing to work with our AEA to ensure that we get our IEPs appropriately funded, since in Marshalltown, they're the people who apply that rubric. Making sure we continue to work to maximize our opportunities for reimbursement, especially around Medicaid. And always exploring other opportunities for supplemental funding. But for tonight, I'm asking for the board to seek authority from SBRC for allowable growth and supplemental aid in the amount $1,745,694.22. Do you guys have other questions about special education services?
You had 661 kids, 11.56 percent of our student population, you said. Can you give me a range for what other districts in the state have, like, I mean, does some have 20, 25 percent of their kids? Some have 5 percent of their kids?
It really depends on the district. There are districts that are as low as 7 and 8 percent, and there are others as high as almost 25 percent.
And so how does a student enter the special education kind of pot and go from get to a level one? How does that happen?
I'll try to make a really long process somewhat...
Headline new version?
Yeah. So essentially, when you have a student fails to respond to intervention and instruction going on in classrooms through our teachers, our Title I service, our school counselors, all those folks, then we start to suspect that there potentially is a learning disability there. At that point, it triggers evaluation from our area education agency, who goes through three standards of evaluation, to talk about why aren't they responding to instruction, what kind of teaching do they need, and what's that environment need to look like so they're successful. If they meet all three criteria through that evaluation process, then we write up an IEP and talk with families about, here's what we found out about the effects of your child's educational disability, and if you agree to it, this is what their special education service would look like in the classroom. And then that starts a conversation about services and supporting them over time.
Isn't there more of that that we could be doing? So a lot of things you talked about, about ways in trying to eliminate or lessen the special education deficit, you focused a lot of your talk on reducing expenses, being more efficient. And so I'm trying to change your thinking a little bit. How do I change the revenue side?
Sure. So...
So that I get more of the $4,900 extra and provide better education services to more kids?
Sure. In the past, when we've looked at doing something in that model, talking with other districts, we found out that really it's a deficit model pretty much any way you approach it. So if you think about the cost for a really qualified teacher in their education, the materials are in a classroom, the number of students they're allowed to work with based on some rules or regulations around that, it's hard to produce a way where you get enough staff and support services within the money given. Because if you think about just the cost of a par educator, which this year, I think we're having around 120 positions, is that right? So a par educator, their salary would essentially consume most of the level three funding, and that doesn't account for the cost of the teacher, any specialized equipment, transportation, structural materials, and a variety of other things that go into those expenses.
Yeah, I had to ask you to challenge that thinking. I know that Jackie at the high school does, has been able to do really terrific work with kids that just need help with homework and, you know, focus and organization and those kind of things. And I think there's probably a lot of kids at the high school that could use that help or aren't getting that help. And could those kids be level one kids, where we're getting paid more to do more good work? So just an idea to think about it. Maybe it's crazy, I don't know.
I'll absolutely think about it.
That's kind of interesting, because years ago, the state really came down on the AAs and on school districts for the over identification of students, that Iowa per capita had a higher number of students and a higher cost associated with those students than any state in the country. And so the clamps have really come down over time, and I think things have balanced out a little bit. I mean, as Matt alludes to, the goal isn't necessarily to not have a deficit. The goal is to make sure that every student that qualifies and needs services is getting those services regardless of what the cost is. But the key is to be as efficient and effective with both the identification and the administration of services so that we are, any cost that's assumed, especially in the deficit mode, which goes straight to property taxes, is money that we can defend and money that truly is needed and deserved as it relates to the education of those students. I think part of the challenge in Marshalltown with the significant ELL population we have is the differentiation between services that are related to language, related to lack of cultural experiences versus special education. So I think that's always a challenge, too, because flip side of that is we'll have students that need all of that, and you'll have students that maybe truly need a piece of that, but which piece is the most appropriate piece to provide or pieces?
Well, and thinking back to when I started here, and I think, you know, you was invited to be part of that when she was building principal, the state asked us to do a corrective action plan because we were just over 17 percent of our kids identified for special education, and they identified that as too high compared to other districts. So we had to come up with a district-wide plan of how are we going to work to reduce that number?
Question is on staffing. So special ed teachers, do you base it on, for each school, do you base it on how many IP you have in school? Or do you just have one elementary, one, three, four, one hand, or whatever?
No, it's a great question. Actually, the teachers came up with what we call a district service delivery plan that really defines how I have to think about staffing buildings. So depending on the types of services in general, you know, with the information we have here, level one teachers tend to work with somewhere around 12 kids or more on their roster. Level two type service students work usually between seven and 12 students. Then level three students who really are most intensive and many on even a different type of assessment system work between one and six students. And that was created by the teachers based on a template that the Department of Education put out. So every year, when it comes hiring time, I go through a process of looking at all of our IEPs and following that plan that was developed, deciding what kinds of positions do I need?
And then what type of training did those paras, that switch from paras to special ed paras go through to be ready and be special ed paras?
They're working through it right now.
Oh, okay.
So beginning of the year, we did give them an overview of what are certification-related services and what are your duties and responsibilities as a par educator. We're now getting ready, I think it's Monday, if dates are right, to do the next piece of it, which is really about that social-emotional work we've been doing here in the district, and how do you apply that kind of work with kids who tend to get upset or, you know, as we call it, dysregulate pretty often. And then they'll have several other learning opportunities to continue to learn about their roles and responsibilities.
It might be a good idea for you to put out again to board members the IEP.
The video?
The video.
Yep, I can do that, thank you.
Nico probably wouldn't have seen it at all, and it's a better question for the rest of us. Other questions for Mr. Kretzinger? May I have a motion to seek authority from the SBRC for the allowable growth and supplemental aid for a negative special education balance?
So moved.
Second.
Miller Heitman, all in favor?
No, no, no. Nico.
Thank you, sir. Gary Heitman, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Me and I have the pleasure to represent the district by sitting on the Marshall High School in the auditorium board, along with the ALCs on that board.
It's 7:00 AM.
And Hal Pax and the auditorium managers on the board as well. Over the course of the last year, there's been discussion, which led me to the committee to take a look at potential renaming of the facility. And the recommendation coming out of that committee through the Auditorium Foundation Board to our district is to approve the renaming of the facility from the MHS/Community Auditorium to the Marshalltown Performing Arts Center. And the feeling was that both Marshalltown versus Marshalltown High School and Performing Arts Center versus Auditorium is more inclusive of the variety of people served as well as the activities that are done in the facility.
Questions?
You all think that you've got enough input from all the stakeholders involved to think that this is a good deal to do?
Is it called the Mark Delanty Performing, what is it? What is the full name?
The name right now is the MHS Community...
No, no, no. But I'm thinking about Special Community Center, the Mark Delanty Theater. What is that called?
Mark Delanty Theater.
Playhouse, playhouse. So that was taken into consideration, the other...
I move for approval if you'd like, and motion.
Okey-dokey. So now we have Miller and Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries six zero.
The Marshalltown Performing Arts Center Foundation Committee also wants permission from our board to establish an ad hoc committee for the purpose of pursuing, meaning researching, investigating, and possibly down the road fundraising, seeking grants, et cetera, or some potential public art that would be somewhere near the front entrance. As you think about it, there's a circle area that's ideal for the potential of public art. There's also been some discussion about possibly on the south side of the entrance and the grass area, kind of between the roundhouse phase two and the performing arts center intersects, so there's no specific intent right now as to where something would be located, but they just want to start looking into that, which I think is a great idea to find something or develop something that would bring attention to that area, similar to what Drills does on the south side of Roundhouse.
Questions? Could I have a motion to approve the establishment of an ad hoc committee for the purpose of pursuing public art for the outside of the Marshalltown Performing Arts Center?
So moved.
Second.
Heitman and Carter, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries six zero. Mr. Potter? Chuck comes in. I think it's time to cut.
Oh, okay, yeah, I was wondering, yeah.
Oh, do you want me to serve the cake?
I'm sorry, I'll go for it then. Go ahead, go ahead.
It's just working. You guys, we never die, no?
There are some things that are more important.
I thought people were just curving my face or something.
It's been a long meeting so far. Is that tossing everyone?
Are you ready for me?
Yes, yeah.
I come up here, Josh is having a little trouble with his voice, so I will come up here and speak. We put the bid for phase three of the security system out. We put the quotes out for bid. We got three good responsive bids back, and what I'm here for is to seek approval to award the bid to ADS in the sum of $532,897.57. This will include the base rate, which will also include ACO2, which is access control and video cameras at entrances, and BSO1, which will include cameras at all of the elementary schools.
External.
External cameras, nothing internal. Thank you.
Do we have a guest beforehand before we... What bids?
Do we have a guest?
A guest, a guest.
It was in the $500,000 range.
Questions for Mr. Springer?
Just remembering the base bid was for access control enhancement, meaning some of the access controls, U.S. entries at the elementaries were going to be upgraded and expanded upon in terms of additional doors. And then the alternates that are being proposed are to essentially do the same at Lanningham, which has a fairly adequate system, still operational, but in that to have external video surveillance capabilities at all of our elementary schools.
I noticed that your recommendation is to award this contract to a company from Missouri versus awarding it because they were the low bid versus a company from Marshalltown, who was the high bid of the three bids.
Correct.
I assume, are there reasons that you want to award this to a out-of-state contractor beyond just price?
Right now, ADS supports our Vigilance System that we have throughout the district, and that is the central, that is the hub of our security system, is the Vigilance System, and ADS is extremely familiar with it, and they currently support that system.
Okay. I just want you, I just want everybody to know that when we do these sorts of things, award local tax money to out-of-state contractors, there may be good reasons with respect to price or features, but the downside... price or features and, but the downside of doing it is when we want to do things like college and career readiness and we want local companies to take our students in for apprenticeship and things like that, they are much more unwilling to do those kinds of things when we do these kinds of things. And so I just want to know the, I just want to highlight what may be unintended consequences of not doing business locally when we have an opportunity to do business locally. I'll, I'll, I'll vote for your decision. I will support your decision, but normally when in doubt, I'd prefer to spend local taxpayer money locally than not locally.
So this, this.
Yes.
This is considered a public construction contract and so there's an Iowa Code Chapter twenty-six that covers all of our public improvements. And under Iowa Code twenty-six point nine, it says the contract for the public improvement must be awarded to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder. So when, when we're talking about public improvements versus just purchasing goods and services, which isn't subject to Chapter twenty-six, there's a little bit of a difference there too.
Got some experience on this and I would say that, yeah, what you said is true and you can write your specs to do anything you want to do.
Other comments, questions? May I have a motion to approve the bid from ADS for the security management system, Phase Three project as presented?
So moved.
Heitman, Carter, correct? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries six zero.
Coming before you is a first reading, which you saw at the last meeting for the first time, is this four oh two point six R Staff Technology Use Social Networking Regulation. We made some adjustments to that, some amendments to that for your review the last time. We haven't changed anything on there, but we did get an email this morning inquiring about a couple of things as it relates to teacher use, so I'm recommending that we take the opportunity as a district to respond to those questions and we'll bring this back for a second reading, making sure that we've addressed those adequately for the next meeting. Four thirteen point eight, we're affording the opportunity if the board so chooses to offer voluntarily retirement to operations maintenance and transportation as we do for other employee groups. We have not made any changes to this since the last meeting.
May I have a motion to adopt four thirteen eight in way of a second reading?
So moved.
Heitman, Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries six zero. Sean, what do you all think?
All right. So number nine hundred, the guiding principles, the recommendation is to complete the first sentence of our current policy and then add the IASB model policy language and then put the last two sentences of our current policy at the end of it.
Questions for Sean at this time?
Current nine oh two point one, the recommendation is to rename and number that, move it to the six hundred series where it fits better than the nine hundred series, but the language of the policy will stay the same.
Do we have approval to market its review with those minor changes?
Nine oh two one, then is your new policy to re, current nine oh two one is moving, so then there's a new nine oh two point one to adopt, and that is the IASB policy.
Questions for Sean at this time? Need to come back.
Nine oh two two, recommend our current as reviewed.
Okay.
Nine oh three one, school committee group also, not any changes to that. Review.
No.
We've got enough of me, I think.
But it's our last chance to be there, why not? Looking at reminders, Mr. Miller, you have three, oh, you're not going to be here next time. Are you?
Number four?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Alrighty. You have three lonely policies. Fisher Elementary will be presenting its school showcase. And MBEA is moved to November twelfth. And we have a lovely seven AM meeting with Internal Communications on this Friday. Okay, because when I looked today, it was still listed, we can check.
Yeah, I think Brad changed the calendar invite, but she may not be here.
Next school board meeting is the fourth and Mike will be here.
Could I add also, anyone who's interested in coming to the equity meeting, we've got the equity committee meeting again, and that is going to be on November seventh at four PM.
And you've invited the board members on that committee?
Yes. Nico will be out of the country and to be determined here, but anybody else?
November what?
November's, the seventh, sorry, November second at four PM, it'll be here in this building in the conference rooms. And that will be an open meeting to the public. The agenda will be posted in advance.
We just need to make sure that we don't have a quorum of board members there.
In what board?
So that's why we have two that are selected for.
All of you, thank you, appreciate it.
We also have CYAC.
Ignore that invite. Ignore that invite, folks.
If you were marking that on your calendar. Committee reports. Patrick Sheedy.
I don't know, just spoke about a number of things that occurred at the Auditorium Foundation Board meeting. They were really excited about the new stage floor that got installed over the course of the summer and there was some additional discussion about Al working with Chuck to develop a carpet replacement plan over time, not to start till probably at earliest next summer. And then we're also working on developing a Hall of Honor for all of our all-state recognized students in band, chorus, orchestra, and speech and debate. It would go in the vicinity of where the windows came out of from Roundhouse Phase Two of the auditorium and cover up in a good way and it really doesn't look so good right now.
Teacher Quality Committee, were you there, Mike?
I was there. We had, this is Amy.
Okay.
Amy was there. We had light attendance, but we were able to go through last year's budget, look at the carryover, review expenditures that were coming out to support district-wide professional learning and then building allocations for principals to use with teachers for professional learning. And then every teacher in the district will get twelve hours of creative rate pay, which creative rate varies from teacher to teacher. It's anywhere from thirty some to fifty dollars an hour. And they can use those twelve hours outside of contract to help support their individual learning with SPOY. And then additionally, if they don't want to do that professional learning, they could take the online classes that we offer in the summer, which are kind of like little four, eight-hour classes that you could take. Oh, Joe was there in town. Basically, the whole group is right here. That they can take those classes online too, in case maybe they didn't have time this summer or are a new hire and want to get caught up. And we also have CYAC on Monday night, the twenty-eighth, too. Did I make it in your last slide? Sorry, I tried to, I don't know if you've been hearing.
It's coming up or you have it?
It's coming up, the twenty-eighth.
For the reminders.
Right.
Sean, Pauline and I attended the Employee Relations Conference that IASB had last year. It's an annual conference. I thought it was excellent. Heard a lot about post-collective bargaining law in terms of how things have gone through the changes and afterwards from, I think they're, the attorneys that spoke were from NCHI. There were all, there was allers in Cuny and Lynch, Dallas, I guess were represented. There was also some great sessions on equity and having an HR focus on equity there. We had opportunities for some breakouts, so the breakout that I attended in the morning had to do with labor management committees, and so they had a couple of different districts talk about, of different sizes, how they handle their labor management committees. So I thought that was really interesting and good information too, because different districts do it differently. And then I also attended a session on growing your own model in terms of really childhood teachers and things that can be done to help recruit and grow your own workforce. Sean or Pauline, anything to add?
No, I thought the, there were a couple of different speakers who talked about equity and I thought that was really insightful and good stuff. I really enjoyed listening to that. And the one breakout session that I have a good memory of was the one on all of the different ways that you become a substitute teacher.
So are you going to become a substitute teacher now?
Please.
You've been hired, thank you.
Anything to follow?
Now that he does everything about repapology in China.
What have we done this evening to increase the effectiveness of education for Marshalltown students?
One thing B I thought that didn't give enough sort of positive press in tonight's agenda was the donation by the folks at Omloa Coretta to offset negative school lunch balances, which is pretty darn cool. And so I just wanted to mention it just to raise it up one more time.
It was nice to hear from Hoblin about the new curriculum. That was really good, you know, I don't know how big he's going to lie for a lot of money.
It seemed like we spent a lot of it last week, so I didn't hear about it.
But it's not a huge number, but refinancing those bonds, two hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars.
Tonight, we had a lot of really good career and college readiness things that were presented tonight that were good for the district as one of our main strategic planning goals. That was nice to hear.
Before we go into a closed session, my quote for this evening comes from Sir Ken Robinson. He's a British author and an international advisor, advisor on education and creativity. And his quote is this, "Learning happens in the minds and souls, not in the databases of multiple choice tests." Stirred that fire. Setting the stage for ISAs.
Paul B, isn't he the keynote speaker for this year for the Association of School Boards members?
Yeah. Well, look what you have to look forward to. It could be controversial. May I have a motion to conduct a hearing on the suspension or expulsion of a student as provided by section twenty-one point five one E of the Code of Iowa?
Are we in the room?
Yes, we are.
And is that motion taped?